We will be speaking with candidates for Montgomery County Council in District 5. This forum is sponsored by the Tacoma Voice and numerous community groups, and actually, maybe towards the end I can list all the groups, but the Old Tacoma Residents Association is chief among them. And I want to give special thanks this evening for the work that Mari Robnett has put into publicizing and organizing these forums for citizens of Tacoma Park and Silver Spring. The format of the forum tonight will be a three-minute opening statement from each candidate, followed by a series of questions. I have questions that I've compiled, questions that have been emailed to me, and just in the last few minutes I've started receiving questions from the audience here tonight at the Tacoma Park Municipal Center. If you have a question and you'd like to hear asked, if you could fill out a form or sheet on the table to my right, and somebody can bring it up to me, I will do my best to ask all the questions that I get. So to begin, we'll go with opening statements, and I'd like to just do this alphabetically. So we'll begin with Ms. Irvin.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I had a press conference on Monday where I had a prepared statement, which I will read to you as my opening three-minute statement. "A journey of a thousand miles begins with one step. Twenty-five years ago, I was a single mom with a toddler, working in a Safeway store part-time. I worked part-time for the benefits that I received from having a union contract. I lived in subsidized housing and wondered many times what tomorrow would bring. But I have come this far by faith in God, and I am not embarrassed by my humble beginnings. I wanted to share with you that my journey is a current reality of many Montgomery County residents whose dreams for themselves and their children I have known and we all share. We might not wear the same shoes, but we are all walking the same path. I am proud to announce my candidacy for the District 5 seat on the Montgomery County Council. I am running for the council because I have a vision of a county government that can partner with business and citizen interests to promote a thriving community, deliver quality public services to everyone in the county, promote and model civility and collegiality, and demand and provide transparency, accountability, and oversight in the Montgomery County tradition of good government. It is my task with your help to begin a new conversation. A conversation with a renewed sense of purpose, to listen and not judge, to reach across racial, ethnic, cultural, and generational and class lines to gain an understanding that there is strength in our differences. District 5 has always had a tradition of welcoming immigrants from all over the world, and I will continue that tradition. We all want the same things. We want the best education for our children, accessible and affordable housing, a transportation plan that makes sense, safe and walkable neighborhoods, and we want clean air and green spaces for our children and grandchildren to enjoy for generations to come. My campaign for the county council is a culmination of years of work in the community, from volunteer efforts to becoming an elected member of the Board of Education. Before my election to the Board of Education, I was a parent volunteer, serving as co-PTSA president of Montgomery Blair High School. I served as the NAACP Parents Council representative, and I'm a member of the National Congress of Black Women, the NAACP, Montgomery County Education Forum, and Mount Calvary Baptist Church. I have raised two children who attended Montgomery County Public Schools, and I have lived in the same neighborhood for almost 20 years. Since my election to the Board of Education, I have continued to advocate for our community and our children, working to close the achievement gap and encouraging broader community involvement in board policy and the allocation of county resources. I can broaden my sphere of influence on public policy while returning to my home district. I believe, as Martin Luther King once said, "There comes a time when one must take a position that is neither safe nor politic nor popular, but one must take it because it is right." I am guided by my feelings of great love for this community, and I am running for the county council seat in District 5 because it is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Irvin. And now we'll hear from Mr. Hans Reimer.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you for everyone who came out tonight to learn more about this campaign and the candidates here. My name's Hans Reimer. I'm running for the Montgomery County Council. I want to represent you on the District 5 seat. I was raised by activist political parents who took me to PTA meetings, city council meetings, ACLU meetings, Neighborhood Watch meetings, many of them held in our own living room. My parents always found the time while starting a small business to be involved in social justice, organizing, and progressive politics. And I learned from them the value of pursuing a career in public service. And shortly after graduating from college, I decided that I wanted to dedicate myself to making a difference. I moved to Washington, D.C., and I have been involved in progressive politics at the national level for more than 10 years. Growing up in Oakland, California, where I'm from, I saw a very deep chasm between a community that was divided over opportunity for good schools, for good jobs, for economic development, for safe streets, and it was those concerns that really compelled me into national politics. Living in Montgomery County, I found that those same problems are right here, and I want to be a part of trying to solve them. Whether the issue is traffic, or having an excellent educational system for all kids, having a safe place for kids to be after school, having neighborhood-serving town centers where we can walk and spend time with our friends, or go shopping without having to drive across county, these are all crucial challenges that Montgomery County is facing, and I want to be part of us building the solutions. I think we need a Purple Line. I think we need after-school programming for all kids who need it and want it. I think we need to take a serious look at how our town centers have been neglected and how they can be improved, and I think we need to make county services more accessible to people, particularly neighborhood-level services. Throughout my career in public service, at every step of the way, I have sought to involve people in making the decisions that affect their lives, and that is what I'm seeking to do on the county council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reimer.
Thank you both. For the next period of the forum, I will be asking questions. Generally, we'll go to both candidates. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond, and then we'll have one minute for follow-up in case that seems necessary. Now, the fact that you have two minutes doesn't mean that you have to speak for the entire two minutes, but you do have that amount of time. The first question, however, is not a general question that goes to both of you, but I have a particular question for Mr. Reimer and a particular question for Ms. Irvin. So I'll start with you, Mr. Reimer, and ask you this question. You did not register to vote in District 5 until late 2004. Do you know the county's seen issues and personalities in history in order to represent the district effectively on the council?
Thanks for the question. I'm glad we can just address this one right at the start. My wife Angela and I moved to Montgomery County to find a better life. We bought a house not far from here on Ritchie Avenue. We loved the neighborhood that we live in, and we moved there for a specific reason. It was because of the diversity of the residents. It was because of the access to a new and reborn Silver Spring. It was because of the ability to get into DC where I work during the day. It was because of the beautiful environment. We moved to Montgomery County to have access to the kinds of neighborhood, quality-of-life aspects that this place has to provide, and that's what I want to work on. We moved here right after the 2004 election, not living in Tacoma Park, didn't have a local election upcoming, registered to vote six months or so after I moved. So my involvement in the county has been since the minute I arrived. I attended my first civic group meeting to discover that everyone was opposed to the Purple Line. I went to immediately get involved with a group called the Action Committee for Transit, which is an advocacy group in favor of the Purple Line. I've been involved with the Silver Spring Citizens Advisory Board Neighborhoods Committee, where I worked with Victor Salazar, my campaign treasurer, on issues such as gang prevention and other neighborhood quality-of-life issues. I've been appointed by the county to the Long Branch Citizens Advisory Board, where I'm involved at ground zero of trying to improve one of the communities that has been neglected in Montgomery County for so long. So I believe that my dedication to community service and to public service is sincere, and I've learned a tremendous amount. I'm continuing to learn, and I look forward to working with you on the county council.
Thank you, Ms. Reimer. And Ms. Irvin, you announced your county council bid 19 months after being elected to a four-year school board term. Have you accomplished everything you set out to do, everything you promised voters you would do on the school board?
That's also a very good question. I ran a very contested race 19 months ago for the Board of Education, and I know that after having served 19 months, I know what a tremendous challenge that it is to serve, and I want to continue in that vein. I know as a progressive, one of the things that we've learned and we've tried to figure out is how to open the doors for more opportunities for progressive candidates to move through the political hierarchy, the political structure. It is very unusual for a seat to come open like this one has in District 5, and I've thought long and hard about how I will make my own contribution to the citizens of my district by running for this seat. I'm still on the school board, and if I don't win the seat, I will finish out my term on the Board of Education. I know that having been at the board, I have changed the entire direction of the conversation just by being at the table. I've challenged the status quo and have worked very, very tirelessly on the closing of the achievement gap and bringing to the board many people whose ideas would never have been heard about any time prior to my serving on the Board of Education. But I also know, having worked at the county council, that being on the county council is a tremendous step forward for a member like me who served on the Board of Education to serve on the county council, understanding fully what the budget is all about and how to leverage my ideas and my enthusiasm and my knowledge for everything I've learned in the last 19 months to finish serving my community out in the county council. I worked with George Leventhal as his chief of staff for the past three and a half years, and there is no better training ground than working in the county council.
Would either of you like to follow up?
Yeah, I'll just say that the issues that I am focused on in my campaign are the same issues that I think everyone here appreciates, I hope, about Montgomery County, which is our quality of life in our neighborhoods, our access to transit to get to and from work without having to sit in our car, our ability to have childcare in our own neighborhood for our kids, good schools with after-school opportunities so kids are safe from gangs or from other negative opportunities after school, safe streets so we can walk home from the metro and not feel that we're under threat. That's the focus of my campaign, and I ask you to judge how that orientation fits with your own as to my qualifications for service. Thank you.
Okay. I have a series of questions that are a little bit more parochial. So you do serve larger area than just Tacoma Park, but we're going to focus on Tacoma Park for a couple of minutes. District 5 has been represented this last term by a Tacoma Park resident, Tom Perez. Neither of you lives in Tacoma Park, and both Tacoma Park candidates left the race when you entered it, Ms. Irvin. How will you ensure that Tacoma Park interests are well-represented in Rockville? We'll start with you, Ms. Irvin.
I have followed the career of our council member, Tom Perez, since he came to the county, and I've worked very closely with him as a chief of staff at the county council. And I understand very, very much by living actually right on the edge of Tacoma Park. So I'm just like walking over a couple of streets, and I'm in Tacoma Park. But I have had a working knowledge of the issues in Tacoma Park, having lived in the county in this area for 20 years. I think I'm very steeped in what goes on in the community and talk to people all the time. Many of my campaign volunteers and staff actually are from Tacoma Park. Susan Phillips, my treasurer, Joy Austin Lane, who serves on my finance committee, and a lot of my friends and neighbors, Stacy Gurry and Sherman, Sherman, Stacy Gurry, all live in Tacoma Park. And believe me, there's not a day that goes by that I don't actually pick up a Tacoma Park newspaper or read about what goes on in Tacoma Park or work on the issues of Tacoma Park at the county council, which I actually just left two weeks ago, my job at the county council. But I don't have a problem at all in understanding the concerns and the issues of Tacoma Park residents.
Thank you. Mr. Reimer?
Well, of course, the most direct way to ensure that the Tacoma Park concerns are met is to involve the residents and elected officials of Tacoma Park in the decision-making process for Tacoma Park issues. And certainly, I would look to the leadership here for the mayor and the city council for a say at the table on anything related to life here in Tacoma Park. You know, as a resident of a city of Silver Spring without a municipal government, I certainly appreciate what you have here in the city with advocates who can speak for your interests, and you're lucky for that. So as the county council representative for all of District 5, including other areas that are also municipalities, such as Kensington, I will be working with local elected officials and residents on Tacoma Park issues.
Thank you. I'll assume there's no follow-up, but I have a follow-up. One of my roles tonight is to put you on the spot, so don't take it personally. We're just trying to find, get to some very specific issues. We have a member of the audience who is concerned about the skate park in Tacoma Park, and undoubtedly both of you have heard about this skate park. The county has allocated capital funds for the skate park. Do you support the county allocating more funds for operating funds to make it functional? And we'll start with you.
Well, I'm familiar with the proposal for a more robust skate park over by Tacoma Metal, and I think that's a good one. I have some concerns about how kids will get there from Silver Spring, but there's a lot of concerns about locating the skate park on Fenton Street, and I haven't seen a good proposal for where a skate park would be around that area. So unless the county finds a better one in the Fenton Village area or off of there, such as on top of a parking structure or something like that, I think that the site here in Tacoma Park makes a lot of sense. But it does need to be high-quality, and the county does need to put significant resources into it.
Thank you. Ms. Irvin?
I know that there's been a lot of discussion about skate parks all over the county in terms of where to place them and whose neighborhoods will they go. But I also know that having served on the school board for the past 19 months, one of the biggest challenges that we have in this county is where do our kids go after school? And because we have a shortage of after-school programs for all children, especially in this part of the county, there is a real push to find a place for kids to go that are safe after school. And this particular site, I think people had looked at it for a long time, and if the county residents, if the residents of Tacoma Park have issues with the placement of the park here, I mean, that's still up for discussion and debate until the monies are allocated. But I really do, I am a very big proponent of after-school programs. Many of the children that live in this part of the county, whose parents do not have the funds to pay for after-school programs, really need to have a place to go between the hours of 3:00 and 7:00 p.m., and most of those children are home without any supervision. And we all know what goes on at home when teenagers have no supervision. And so we need to do all that we can to promote safe recreation facilities and places for our youth to participate in after-school. So I am a very big proponent of these kinds of programs, and I would sort of leave that open to the citizens in Tacoma Park to continue that discussion on about where the park should go, how much it costs, and what it should look like.
Thank you. Would you like to add anything? Similarly, this facility that we're now sitting in is our old municipal center and our new community center. Originally, there was supposed to be a gymnasium associated with the center. In the last legislative session, the state has pledged $320,000 toward a gymnasium for this center, and I'm wondering if you are prepared to lead on the county council to make sure that the county matches that amount?
My first?
Your first.
Okay, absolutely. I was actually in many of the rooms where the discussions were going on about whether or not the county council was going to fund the gymnasium. And unfortunately, what ended up happening was competing needs sort of forced the council to make some decisions about what should be funded, whether it be the gymnasium or some other capital projects that they were taking up in Tacoma Park. Again, just a couple of minutes ago, I stated the need for after-school programs. The biggest problem we have in Montgomery County is lack of public facilities for children, school-aged children to participate in after-school activities. So as the county reaches build-out, there are fewer and fewer places for our kids to go, and because the public facilities in our county schools, for example, are so booked up in advance that there practically are no spaces available. So I would pledge my support of a gymnasium, especially in this area of the county where we really need to have it. And I also have a proposal on the table that I can discuss later about how and where we build more recreation facilities and how we use AstroTurf instead of grass, because we are wearing our fields out. We have multiple uses of all these spaces, and we need to be thinking more proactive in the county about what to do, about where our youth go. We actually had a school board meeting two weeks ago to talk about this AstroTurf thing, which I never knew anything about, but it is all part of how we have to look toward the future as we're running out of public space use, and here in Tacoma Park, that gym is very needed.
Thank you. Mr. Reimer?
Yes, I would definitely prioritize funding for the gym, and similar to Ms. Irvin, I believe that funding for that could be allocated as part of a process of improving our after-school policy in this county. Montgomery County doesn't really have an after-school policy. That's the problem. It lets schools fight it out. It lets parents fight it out, and there's a haphazard approach to the issue. I think Montgomery County actually has to decide, should every child in Montgomery County have access to after-school programming? How much can we afford to put towards that goal? If we can't afford every child, which I think we should, you know, how many can we afford? What's the priorities and what are the purposes? And go through a process with every stakeholder at the table so we can make a decision and achieve an actual policy goal relating to after-school programming. I think that's critically important, particularly for areas of the county that are absorbing new residents, where kids have language proficiency issues, where on the way home they might be coming across kids who are trying to recruit them into gangs, or they just don't have positive opportunities after school. All kids should have positive opportunities after school. So I believe the county and the county council, working with everybody together at the table, needs to lead a process of developing a policy and then identifying funding for it.
Can I respond?
Thank you. Yes.
Actually, there's actually a lot more to the question than that. After having sat on the school board and I recently became a member of the board of the Carl M. Freeman Foundation, which had a meeting today with a community fund, which really the focus was all about after-school programs. The county itself, the county government, doesn't have a policy on after-school programs, but the school system does. The problem is there is no real focus and there is no real leadership in terms of how we spend, how much we spend, and who spends it. So for example, council member Tom Perez recently, to his credit, spearheaded the effort at Blair High School, the Blair Sports Academy, and there's been efforts like that, similar efforts like that up in Gaithersburg with soccer. But in my opinion, I believe the school system with its almost $2 billion operating budget should have money somewhere to make sure that every single school in this system has after-school programs and that we fund them.
Thank you. Ms. Reimer?
Yeah, I just repeat. I mean, I think that the way things are now, it's, you know, the initiative is on parents and schools to put together the after-school programming, and that's a big problem. If resources go only to people who know how to organize and push for them, then you're going to end up with a distribution of resources that may not be fair, or certainly one that doesn't achieve a particular policy goal. So again, I think that the county has to take the leadership, sit down, bring everyone to the table, develop a policy, figure out what's out there. You know, we don't even know how many after-school programs exist in the county right now. We're trying to figure that out, but nobody really knows. So identifying what's out there, then figuring out how those resources are being utilized, how can they be utilized more effectively? This is a process that's beginning. It's starting to show some results, but county leadership is really needed.
I just want to respond to the statement that we don't know how many after-school programs that we have. We do. The Collaboration Council for Children, Youth, and Families just did a massive study which outlined every single after-school program in the county, and we're using that as a template to move into the future in terms of where we need to go, where we need to access and leverage our dollars, and that document does exist.
You can have the last word on this one.
Well, I met with the Collaboration Council quite recently, and they described their process as being in the very initial stages and a long-term one. So if they produce something, I would say I'd like to see it, and it would be understanding that it's more of an interim step than a actual complete policy, but I'd like to see it.
Okay, I'm sure that we'll return to these issues.
I served on the Collaboration Council when we came up with the document.
Mr. Reimer, in the southern section of the county in particular, affordable housing is of particular concern because of the large population of lower-middle-income residents. To put it in perspective, a full-time minimum wage earner makes less than $11,000 per year, and an individual fortunate enough to earn Montgomery County's living wage earns $22,400 per year. According to the 2004 report by the Housing, Department of Housing and Community Affairs in Montgomery County, the average rent for a two-bedroom apartment in Montgomery County is $14,500 per year, and at that time, the average cost of a home was over $350,000. And as you know, those rates continue to rise. My question is, how do you define affordable housing? Who needs affordable housing assistance? And what specific policies do you propose to address this crisis? So it's a three-part question.
Well, we have a housing crisis in Montgomery County. Everybody knows, and it's a crisis that affects low-income workers and middle-income workers, and it really affects many, many people. To me, the solutions for the housing crisis start with, first of all, adding housing to our housing stock. You know, set-asides don't work very well when you're not setting aside any actual building. So we have to add housing to an annual supply. You know, the MPDU program that is appreciated here only generates a few hundred units a year. We need several thousand units a year if we were to meet our demand for affordable housing. The most important step that I think we can take for the present time is to significantly increase the Housing Opportunities Fund, which purchases buildings and makes them available on an improved basis for low-income renters. That said, it's a big challenge to That said, it's a big challenge to have effectiveness with that because land prices are so expensive because housing is so scarce. So there aren't any easy solutions, but finding ways to, and there's no magic bullet. It's really a combination of everything. But finding ways to have more housing being built in areas where there's access to transit, having the Housing Opportunities Fund with more funding, slowing the condo conversion rate, and particularly protecting people who are of vulnerable economic status during that process. These are all measures that would together make a big difference for people at the middle income and particularly the low-income level.
Thank you. And I'll repeat the questions. Ms. Irvin, how do you define affordable housing? Who needs housing assistance? And what specific policies do you propose to address this crisis?
Okay, thanks. I think more and more people need housing assistance. I read my statement earlier. I lived in subsidized housing 25 years ago as a single mom. And I know that the government sort of cuts the issue this way, that if you spend more than 30% of your income on housing, it's not affordable any longer. I'm living pretty close to the edge. So if 30% is the cutoff, that means all the people living in the county who spend more than that much of their annual income, they're in a housing crunch. In Montgomery County last year, about 4,800 housing permits were let, but only 1,000 affordable housing units in the last five years on average we generated, which is just about 210 affordable units a year. We have a lot of work to do in this area. So we have this very well-known moderately-priced dwelling unit, MPDU program in Montgomery County. However, it only goes so far. And I think that it actually puts us in a box. And the box is this, that we go around touting how great our MPDU program is, but really it's not about affordability. It's about how many units that the developer has to sell at market rate and below market rate. So if the market rate's $800,000 in a brand-new development, then the MPDU is going to be somewhere under that market rate, which is really not affordable. I think that the county has to do all it can to be more proactive and to build partnerships with builders and community activists. And there are some where even union builders are building great affordable housing in partnerships in different parts of the country. And we should look to these best practices to build more homes.
Thank you. Would you like to follow up, Mr. Reamer?
No, I think that was fine.
Okay. And would you like to follow up?
Yeah, so I want to get back to that because we really have a, and we have a situation in Montgomery County where developers sort of are leading the affordable housing movement by using the MPDUs as the way they're going to do it. I think that's one way to look at it, but I think there are many, many other strategies available to us that we need to look around the country for these really great, promising projects where builders and developers and community folks and unions are building affordable homes in different parts of the country. We can look to these places and try to build in that way.
Thank you. Ms. Irvin? In recent months, some national politicians and the media have pushed immigration to the forefront of debate. Locally, we've seen the introduction of a group called the Minutemen, who have sought to make Montgomery County a battlefield for illegal immigration. Some people would like to see the county take a more aggressive role in policing immigration, especially in terms of services that the county offers. Other people advocate the continued funding of immigration centers such as Casa de Maryland and Direct Services. What do you feel is the proper role of the county in addressing residents who do not have the proper legal documents of residence in the United States? And will you be a leader on this issue?
I will absolutely be a leader on this issue. I think there's a lot of hate in our community. And in some regards, I have been, for my whole life, for generations that came before me, had to fight the battles in the civil rights movement. And this one is no different. In Montgomery County, we do not check whether or not you have a passport when you need services at the hospital. And that's the way it should be. It's not the role of county government to put a wall up around Montgomery County and say, prove that you're a citizen. We have never done that here in Montgomery County. This is an open county. All you have to do is prove that you live in the county, and you can receive services at hospitals. You can receive the services that you need. I was reminded, as I was preparing for this debate, the poem by Emma Lazarus, which is, "Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free." That's what we stand for in America. And it's a shame that we have closed the door to immigrants. And I think it's really about hate, and it requires someone who will stand up and say, "Not here, not in Montgomery County." And I will be that person.
Thank you. Mr. Reamer?
I believe that the responsibility of the county government is to provide services to the residents of the county. And we're not a enforcement agency for the federal government and its border control issues. We're here to serve the people who live here. The county can do a lot more to help people who are new immigrants integrate and achieve success in their dreams in our society here. It's a very big challenge for new immigrants to access county services. The services are, of course, that many people would like to take away from them. But anything that we can do with immigration centers, with language proficiencies, and access into the school system, access to neighborhood-level services, to housing services, all of these have to be evaluated and examined for their effectiveness in being open to newer immigrants. Similarly, I believe we have to have greatly expanded adult English training. It's very hypocritical for people who attack new immigrants for not knowing English and provide no way for new immigrants to learn English. The county needs to be taking the lead. We're catching up, thanks to the leadership of Tom Perez and others. But we've got a long ways to go in making English, the opportunity to learn English truly available to everybody who wants it in our county.
Thank you.
Can I have a comment?
Yes.
And I also wanted to mention that in this campaign, I have been joined by Gustavo Torres of Casa de Maryland and Delegate Anasol Gutierrez. And it's one of a very unusual kind of coalition that's being built between African-Americans and Latinos in Montgomery County. We need to do this. We have to reach across these lines because it's not been done before. And a lot of the hate is coming out of my own community. I believe we have to model the correct behavior, and I'll be doing that.
Thank you. Would you like to follow up?
And another way that I believe that we need to better serve our new immigrant community is with support for creation of new businesses. And I'm also proud to have the support of Manny Hildago from the Latino Economic Development Corporation. And I'm delighted that the county is bringing Manny and his Economic Development Corporation into Wheaton. I think that providing support for new businesses with organizations like Manny's is exactly the way that we can be an embracing organization, a county for new immigrants, help them start their businesses, achieve their dreams, and at the same time, improve the quality of life for everyone here.
Recently, former Vice President and elected President Al Gore was in Silver Spring to promote his new movie, An Inconvenient Truth. One of the, the main point of that film is that we are now facing a crisis of climate change. And I'm wondering how you would lead on the county council to quickly and effectively craft policy to address the challenges of climate change?
The most important challenge that we're facing in Montgomery County for climate change is our transportation system. We do not have an effective mass transit system in Montgomery County. All we have is a metro rail designed to get people into DC. But there's no light rail system designed to get people around the suburbs. The most important thing that we can do, I believe, on the environmental front, is to build a light rail system for Montgomery County. And that starts with the Purple Line, but it doesn't end with the Purple Line. It keeps going on from there. The second most important thing that we can do is get serious about, in our land use and our planning, to get serious about locating growth in areas where it's well-served by mass transit, where people don't have to sit in their cars for hours to get from home to work, where people can walk into town for their errands, where they don't have to obviously drive everywhere. That is the future of Montgomery County. And I believe we need to be a leader in this area of promoting smarter development located in the right places and not in the wrong places. And other important things that we can do are, I think, in the areas of stormwater management and improving our tree canopy. Even individually, we can do things in this area. So if I saw the movie the night it came out, I was pleased to be involved in Al Gore's campaign. I think his leadership is terrific. And there's a list of 10 things that we can all do to reduce the carbon load, saving power in our own homes, recycling more, efforts like that. So I'd urge everybody to check that out, too.
Thank you.
Yes, one of the things I'm most proud about working on is the issue of the environment and clean renewable energy sources. The very first thing I did as coming on board, the Chief of Staff, George Leventhal, was we held a press conference on clean renewable energy. And the council member proposed that Montgomery County purchase 5% at that time of its renewable energy sources from wind power. That was three and a half years ago. It's now at 10%, and we just passed a bill to take it to 20%. And so I've been very immersed in the policy area, and I am very excited about what we're doing here because Montgomery County is in a non-attainment zone for its horrible air quality, especially during the summer months. And a lot of it's from the NOx emissions from cars, but a lot of it's from power plants in the Ohio Valley area. And a lot of that sort of gets trapped in the air in the summertime. And so we have very poor air quality. The thing that George Leventhal was able to do was to give us a lot of credits for this clean renewable source of energy. And we were able to work with the federal government to get transportation credits back into the county. This is a very important thing. We also worked on some transit issues. We were part of the team that started the coalition to build the Inter-Purple Line, which I am extremely proud of being a part of. And so since I've been at the county council, I have worked very exclusively and extensively on energy and clean renewable sources and learned a lot about air quality, water quality in this county. And we have a lot of work to do here in this area. We might be the first generation ever where fossil fuel will be gone. And we're going to have to figure out a way to get people out of their cars and on mass transit.
Would you like to follow up?
I just want to say that I think the most important thing we need in this county is better mass transit. I think we need a light rail system above grade. It starts with the Purple Line, but it doesn't stop there. It goes up Georgia Avenue. It goes everywhere, the corridor cities. It goes everywhere that we can send it. The second most important is to finally get serious about smart growth, to stop building new subdivisions in the far reaches of the county, and to put our housing around our transit and locate our job centers closer to where people live. This will make the biggest impact that I can think of in Montgomery County.
Thank you. And would you like to follow up, Ms. Irvin?
Yeah, the follow-up on that is, I think that the county 30, 35 years ago, started out with a great idea, and that was the idea of wedges and corridors, that we would build the corridor for where all the development would take place. And that happened. But the wedges part was, we were supposed to preserve wedges and green space. And we have 93,000 acres of green space in the agricultural reserve. And I think the next four years, whoever sits on the county council has a tremendous responsibility for holding on to that 93,000 acres and other wedges of green space around this county. And I think that the work that I've been able to do and my understanding in this policy area will allow me to hit the ground running. I don't have to be trained. And I think that it's a very important reason that what separates me from Hans is that we all pretty much think the same way about many of these issues, but I know how to get a majority of the council members to back me. I've worked with them all, and they're all supporting my run for the county council in District 5.
I'm going to follow up with, we have a couple of questions that have come from the audience about transportation. I'm going to see if I can maybe put them all together into one question, and maybe we'll need to have a follow-up to that. There are a lot of questions about what your positions are relative to the Purple Line and to the Inter-County Connector. So two very different issues, but you know, perhaps very similar issues, depending on how you look at that. So Ms. Irvin, what are your positions in regard to the Purple Line and with regard to the Inter-County Connector?
I know that the Inter-County Connector for many, many years has been a litmus test for people in terms of their environmental and, you know, where they are regarding the environment and roads versus transit. And I have to say that now the road looks like it's going to be built, but I do have many, many questions. One is, if it gets funded, because that still remains to be seen, I think, if it gets funded, how much that road is going to cost? It's going to be a toll road, and it's going to cost a tremendous amount of money for people to drive each way if they're trying to take cars off the road. And there are still many people who believe that this road won't take any traffic off the Beltway or any of the other major arterials going through Montgomery County. My concern is that for many working people, teachers, firefighters, you hear the story about how many people travel great distances to come to Montgomery County to work, and we may be charging those very people and making it cost prohibitive for them to even drive on the road, number one. Number two, cost overruns. I actually have a proposal that I've been talking to people about in terms of how this road, the cost of this road has to be contained. And so there are many issues still around whether or not the road is actually going to get built anyway. I know that Councilmember Phil Andrews is still working very hard to make sure that it doesn't happen. But if I'm elected to the county council, if the road gets built, there are still many things that have to be done to mitigate a lot of the environmental impacts, to mitigate against the high cost of using the road, to mitigate against the high cost of the road specifically. As for the Purple Line, how much time do I have? As for the Purple Line, I am a very big proponent of getting people out of their cars and on mass transit. But I know that the Sligo community has very many concerns about where that road is going to go and what the alignments are actually going to be. So these things are not set in stone yet. The alignment, there was going to be a Wayne Avenue alignment, now they were thinking about a Sligo alignment.
Thank you, and I will follow up.
I will follow up.
Yeah, I'll follow up on that. So, Mr. Reamer?
Well, I think regarding the Inter-County Connector, at this point, the most important thing is to make sure that we hold the line on zoning so that the Inter-County Connector doesn't lead to a boom in new development. And we have to implement it with the most rigorous and vigorous environmental standards that are possible. I do think that the ICC is going forward, so now we have to make the best of the situation. Regarding the Purple Line, I'm a very strong advocate of the Purple Line. Like Valerie, I live not far off of one of the proposed alignments. We don't know exactly what will come back from the MTA study. I believe that you have to tunnel through some portions of East Silver Spring. I don't know how long those tunnels will be. I don't know how much we can afford. But we have to minimize tunneling in order to make this project a reality. There's another important issue about the Purple Line. I think it may be the defining issue about whether it becomes a reality, which is how does it get to Bethesda? I believe that except for a tiny portion under Connecticut Avenue, it needs to be above ground to Bethesda. That will change the nature of the trail. I know that. And as a biker, I biked that trail many times, and I look forward to when we complete the bike trail to Bethesda. It will begin the process, or it will complete a big section of a bicycle Beltway. So keeping it above ground to Bethesda so we can save the money to tunnel through East Silver Spring, I think, is the crucial issue for the council in the upcoming year.
And I'll give you both two more minutes to respond, and maybe a minute or so after that. So, Ms. Irvin?
I think that building the Purple Line is going to be one of the most defining things that the county council will do in the next decade. And it's very interesting, since I've been involved with the coalition to build the Inter-Purple Line for almost four years now, one of the things that I tried to do with several people in Prince George's County was to get the African-American community and the Latino community to engage in the conversation about the use of the Inter-Purple Line. There's a book that was recently... There's a book that was recently published called The Covenant that was written by Tavis Smiley and Dr. Cornell West. They were both here a few weeks ago. And there's a chapter in that book about transportation and who uses public transportation. And in our country, the majority of the people you see on the bus and on the trains are African-American and Latino people. And so as we, as we go through this process of talking about the importance of, of the environment and global warming, warming and getting out of cars and the cost of gas, we really are looking into a future that's going to look very, very different than it does right now. And so the Purple Line, and I know there's a lot of talk about the alignments, and I, and I understand that. There, I live right off Wayne Avenue. I actually kind of liked it for anybody here. I, I have this picture of Seattle. I don't know how many of you've been in Seattle and seen their light, their light rail, and what a fabulous thing it is in Seattle. And it's right next to a trail where people bike and walk, and it's, it's just fabulous. And so we have an opportunity in this county to really walk the walk and not just talk the talk. And the county council just approved a $5 million expenditure to open up the space in Bethesda where the, where the train will actually sort of go through. Had they not done that, we would still be sitting at these, at these meetings talking about, wouldn't it be great if?
Thank you.
So we had, we've come a long way.
Thank you. Mr. Reamer?
I think getting this job done is one of the most defining issues that the council will face in the coming years. And I want to communicate to you why I'm the candidate to get this job done. When I was 23 years old, I founded a public policy organization 10 years ago. That, that's a think tank that focused on economic issues from a youth perspective. Four or five years later, four and a half years later, after Al Gore lost the presidential race, I decided that to take the fight on the issue that I was most passionate about, social security, I needed to go to a national coalition level. I helped organize a national coalition of organizations that fought on the issue of social security. From 2001 to 2003, we stopped President Bush and the Republicans on the issue of social security. After that, I went to the organization Rock the Vote. In the 2004 election, I engaged millions of young Americans in the political process. We registered 1.4 million voters. We helped increase youth voter turnout for the first time since 1992. I have a track record of getting very big things done, of advancing progressive values, and I want to do that in Montgomery County on issues like the Purple Line, after-school programming, our whole transportation system, and our approach to land use planning, just as a start.
Thank you.
Yes. I would also like to follow up in terms of who's got the ability to really move this forward. I actually have on-the-ground experience. I know really well how the county council works, what's required behind the scenes to move any policy into sound, something sound and real and concrete. And I can do that by amassing the numbers of votes I need on the county council to move these initiatives forward. I have those responsibilities. And also, in terms of my own experience, for the last 20 years, I was a union organizer. It was my job to go knock on doors and talk to people about joining the union, about, about equality, about economic opportunity. And I take those kinds of issues with me. They're in me. They're in my heart and my soul. They're what I know. They're what I've worked on. This is why I ran for the, for the school board on the issue of education equity. And I feel like I have a voice, and I use that voice for these very purposes.
And Mr. Reamer, would you like to follow up?
No, I will, I will. I'll just say, what, what is needed here is leadership from the county to engage the public in the process, to educate the public about the important facts at stake, and to move everybody forward towards the goal. I believe that my background in coalition politics and public policy and lobbying, all of these things, will make a very big difference in my ability to make progress. The coalition that I was involved in was a national campaign of unions, of women's groups, civil rights organizations, disability organizations, seniors organizations, pretty much the entire progressive coalition. Look to the organization where I worked and the campaign that I ran for leadership on the issue of social security. We stopped the Republicans. We stopped President Bush on social security. I believe if I can play a role like that, I know I can be of value here in Montgomery County.
We may return to the Purple Line. I have another question I was trying to get to, but let's turn for a second to education. And Mr. Reamer, I'll start with you. Do you support funding of gifted and talented magnet programs in Montgomery County public schools?
I do. I think that our schools have to be excellent for everybody. That's kids on the bottom, that's kids in the middle, and that's kids at the top. I think we need a very special focus now on kids in the middle and in our middle schools. The whole testing regimen that we have is degrading the quality of education for a lot of kids. It's also producing results. I, I certainly know that. But in general, I believe that there has to be space for everyone and that high achievers need programs that are designed for them, just as lower achievers or average achievers need programs designed for them. The goal is to move kids up, to constantly push them up as aggressively as possible. And it's not a zero-sum game, of course. I mean, we can move kids up without having to make changes that would cause other kids to come down. So as a product of public schools in Oakland, California, as well as private schools in Oakland, California, I have some experience with these kinds of programs. They can work if they're done right.
Thank you. Ms. Irvin?
Ms. Irvin? It's not, no surprise to many people in this room that I ran a school board race on this very issue of equity. When you walk into any school in Montgomery County, what you will find is resegregation inside the school buildings. I think that gifted and talented programs for more kids are great because gifted and talented programs are what we want for most of the kids in our school system. And to refer to kids as low achievers is actually a problem for me because I don't think kids come into the school system achieving low. But they get messages that maybe some are learners and others are not learners. What I've tried to do around this issue is just open up the debate broader. And what we're doing now in Montgomery County is actually very promising, and that is we have whole school magnets, starting in middle schools. There is a great whole school magnet at Parkland Middle School, and most of the kids in that school are kids of color and they're poor. They're, the majority of them are farm students. And they are achieving in an unbelievable way. And it is so exciting to see that if you take away the barriers to a sound public education at the highest levels for the most children, children succeed when they have the opportunity to succeed. And this has been a tremendous 10-year journey in my life after having seen what happens to children through my, through my, the eyes of my own children and as a mom. But I think this county is on its way to building a better, fabulous school system for all kids, high achievers. And there are high achievers in Montgomery County public schools. But I'd like to see a model that allows more kids to succeed and realize all their dreams. And I think we're on the right road.
Thank you. Ms. Reamer, would you like to follow up?
No, I think that's fine.
Okay. Oh, would you like to follow up, Ms. Irvin?
Yeah, well, I, I have a couple more things I can say about that. One of the things that we're actually facing in Montgomery County has to do with how we roll out ESOL programs and how we have to stop, start looking beyond deficit, a deficit model. So for example, this word diversity is beginning to get very loaded. And in a lot of ways, diversity is a phrase that's, that says, if the, if the school is too diverse, then it can't succeed. And what I'd like to see happen, and it's starting to happen, is that we offer more dual-language immersion programs for more students who come here speaking Spanish first. And there are some really fabulous programs in the county and ones at Kent Mill Elementary School. But you know, this is, we're all learning by doing. We're, we're making the road as we walk the road. And these are very complex issues, and I think that having served on the Board of Education has given me a bird's eye view into the complicated nature of the school system.
Many people in this community feel that developers have too much influence in county politics, and that has contributed to sprawl. In the last election, a coalition of candidates pledged not to accept developer funds in their campaigns. So my question to you is whether you pledged to, whether or not you pledged to accept no developer funds?
I have not pledged to accept no developer funds because I believe that, first of all, people like me aren't supposed to be in politics anyway. I'm not rich, and I don't know any developers. But if I were to get a check from a developer, I'd have to check to see who it is because I wouldn't know on its face. And the reason I'm saying that is because I think we have come to a place in our, in our county's history where we have polarized the conversation. The conversation is not necessarily pro-development versus anti-development, is how do we better develop our county? And I want to have that different conversation because we are already on opposite ends of the spectrum. I think we're going to have a lot of conversations on my campaign about this issue. We haven't done it yet. But I know neighbors of mine who build houses, and they vote, and they're citizens, and they have a right to write a check to a, to a campaign. And the Bridlock slate and that whole campaign was so horrible because the sole focus of it was developers buying the election. Hopefully, that's not what's going to happen in my campaign. So I don't know that many people that would call themselves developers. If I happen to get any checks, I'll look at them, and I know where to go find out. But I do know that there is influence at the county council sometimes when developers are, when council members are voting on developer projects, when developers have given to their campaign. So I believe that that's problematic. And so as a campaign, as a person in this campaign this time, for the first time in a county council race, I think that's up for discussion. And I haven't made up my mind about whether or not I'm going to be accepting donations or not accepting donations.
Thank you. Mr. Reamer?
If you look at the history of downtown Silver Springs revitalization, I think you see what the appropriate approach to developers can be. The developers came up with one bad idea after another, and a citizen coalition organized and beat down one bad idea after another. Finally, they came up with the right balanced approach that has resulted in a wondrous transformation of downtown Silver Spring, has created tremendous life. You walk down there on a Friday night, and there's 700, 800 people just enjoying themselves and spending time. I, developers are part of the conversation. They have a seat at the table. They should not have an unbalanced influence in the process. And when they do, the results are bad. If the process is bad, the results will be bad. I will take some money from developers. I follow Tom Perez's lead on this. Tom Perez took some money from developers. He set a limit. I will set a limit. I haven't decided what it is, but it will certainly be nothing like what has already been quoted as, you know, criticism of council members who take more than half of their money from developers as being in the pockets. I, I can assure you, I'll be nowhere near that.
Thank you. Would you like to follow up, Ms. Irvin?
I did have a thought, and I just, just went out of my mind.
Okay, I have a question from the audience. Maryland has had a green building network providing information for years. Tacoma Park has had green building guidelines since 1999. Do you support mandatory green building standards in Montgomery County?
Yes, I do. While on the school board, I passed a resolution on building green schools, which is going to be taken up sometime this summer, I believe. And I also did a lot of the research on the, a new bill that's coming before the county council on green buildings. So the county council is going to vote whether or not to approve that all commercial buildings now be built with 20, 20 lead, 20 lead points. Many of the buildings being built now already use that kind of building technology, but we wanted to, we wanted to put that into law as a, as a floor and a place to, to move forward. So I absolutely am 100% on board that. I have a son who's a sophomore in college. He's majoring in environmental science, and he is always a litmus test of mine. When, when I wrote my resolution, he, he and I had a long conversation about what that should look like. So this is something, we're, we're entering into a new phase in not only Montgomery County and not only in this country, but in the world as we're being faced down with global warming, the end of what we now know as fossil fuel, and where we're going to go. We have to be a leader in this area as much as possible. We are moving forward, and I'm really proud of my work in that area.
Thank you.
The statistic may be wrong, but I believe that 30 to 40% of our energy usage is in our buildings. Anything that we can do to make our buildings more energy efficient will have a profound impact on our energy usage and as a result, on the degradation of the environment that we produce in Montgomery County. I would like to see, and this isn't my idea, but an audit of Montgomery County's public and private facilities and buildings for their energy efficiency and go through and determine where can we make improvements? How can we reduce our overall carbon, our contributions of carbon into the environment? There are many steps. I applaud the effort to raise the, building the lead standards to 20%. There's been some very good progress in recent times on energy efficiency on the council. I think that needs to continue. And again, anything that we can do in this area, I will be strongly in favor of.
Thank you.
There actually is an audit underway. It's part of George Leventhal's Green Buildings Bill. And also, when the Clean and Renewable Energy Bill passed, there was written into that law, an audit of all county buildings. And so that is underway.
I knew it was a good idea. Is that your follow up?
Yes.
Okay. I, we're going to do something a little bit different here. I have, I have two more questions for each of you, and we have a microphone in back. So after I'm done with those questions, I haven't done this in years, but we're going to take questions from the audience. So I have one, one particular concern, and then a general question for you. So Mr. Reamer, while many people are pleased that development has taken the direction it has in downtown Silver Spring, and they're pleased that projects like the New American Dream were defeated, so we do not have a roller coaster going down next to St. Michael's during Mass. There is more than a little concern among small businesses about their future. We've seen many small businesses go out of business recently, Half Moon Barbecue, Roadhouse Oldies and others. And I'm wondering, and many of these small businesses feel that the county does not give them the same amount of attention that the larger businesses get. What is, how will you be a leader for small business interests within this district?
Thank you. Preserving small businesses is, I think, at the heart and soul of what this county needs to do better as we go through the process of redeveloping, revitalizing, rejuvenating our older core town centers. We need to move towards a future where Wheaton, Long Branch, Hillendale, White Oak, Montgomery Hills, the rest of downtown Silver Spring, all of these areas have neighborhoods serving retail, where you can walk in from the surrounding areas, have transit in from the surrounding areas, you can get your, you can have some dining opportunity, you can have leisure in a quality environment that is safe, that is walkable. But getting there means that the county has to really foster a culture of small business through the redevelopment process. And I believe that we need steps, for example, in downtown Silver Spring, and my mother is the president of her local merchants association. I don't believe that we have a merchants association in downtown Silver Spring. We should. The county should do a much better job of marketing the businesses in Silver Spring to consumers in the area. Also, marketing plan, training. If you go in, my next door neighbor, Endarge Masu, Endarge Asfaw is here. His mother runs the Masu Salon. I asked, spoke with him about how was the county during the process of opening a new salon on Fenton Street? They said that the county didn't do anything for them, that the permitting process was a total nightmare, and that a lot could be done. the permitting process was a total nightmare, and that a lot could be done better. Those are the issues that I think small businesses are faced with, and the county has to take much more initiative to clear the way, so that small businesses can thrive in our downtown centers.
Thank you. Ms. Irvin?
I think that the local small business are the heart of a vibrant community, and unfortunately, in Silver Spring, we missed some opportunities to hold on to the flavor of Silver Spring by losing the very businesses that we should have been working very hard to sustain. We have some more opportunities to do something in a positive way. We have those opportunities as we're entering to the, the second, third, and fourth phase of the redevelopment of downtown Silver Spring. We also, in District Five, have the Wheaton Redevelopment Core that's happening right now, and there's still, there are a lot of concerns that Silver Spring is going to go, I mean, Wheaton is going to go the way of Silver Spring. And so the county council has a big role to play in upholding the promise of small business in our local economy. I feel really bad that we missed an opportunity. I had a friend visiting me from out of town last week, and we walked downtown Silver Spring, and she noted all of the corporate entities in downtown Silver Spring, and she said it reminded her of a Hollywood movie set. And that mostly was because that movie screen was up there that night. But it also has a, has a flavor of, all of a sudden, we plop this thing into the middle of our, our downtown area, and it doesn't feel like Silver Spring because Silver Spring isn't there. And so we've missed some opportunities. I think we've learned from what we've done, and hopefully, as we continue the redevelopment of Silver Spring and Wheaton, we put this at our very, you know, front and center, top priority.
Thank you very much. Would you like to follow up, Mr. Reamer?
Yes, I think, I, I would certainly share the criticisms that in downtown Silver Spring, we seem to clear out the local small businesses and replace them with national chains. And that does not, that should not happen again in any of our neighborhood-serving town centers. What I believe we need, again, is to create a culture of small business through redevelopment. One of the important ways that we can do it is by bringing in outside organizations, such as the one supported by my supporter, Manny Hildago. He runs the Latino Economic Development Corporation. They do seminars on the weekends. They train small business owners in how to create marketing plans, and how to create their business plans. Then they help them market. They talk to them about how to solve traffic, parking issues for their business. We need much more of that. In, in Wheaton and Long Branch, we have an opportunity to get it right there, and we should not let that pass us by.
Thank you. For my final question before we go to the audience, I think we've heard tonight progressive platforms from both of you. And I'd like to hear from each of you, what makes you particularly well-suited to serve us on District, in this, in this seat, District Five, on the county council?
I stated earlier, my love of this community, and the fact that I chose to live here many years ago to raise my two sons, who attended Montgomery County Public Schools all the way through. I feel particularly situated to fill this seat because of my experience. I've been an elected official. I ran countywide almost two years ago. I am very steeped in my community and my church. I belong to many organizations and feel very committed to Silver Spring, to Tacoma Park, to Kensington, to Wheaton. It's my home. I chose to live here. I could have lived anywhere else in the region. I moved here in 1987 and lived on Easy Street, which is right off Fenton, for about four years, and then I moved to the house I live in now, which is right behind what I still call the Old Blair High School. And I love Silver Spring. I love this community. I feel really passionate about all these issues that we've talked about tonight. I feel like I'm poised and ready to hit the ground running come December one, when the new council is sworn in. I've got a lot of experience in public policy directly related to District Five, and I would love to serve you all as your council member.
Thank you. And Mr. Reamer?
I've spent my life advancing progressive values and progressive goals. I was raised in a progressive activist family. As I mentioned, my parents were involved with the ACLU, with their local small business, with their PTA. I grew up in that environment. I dedicated myself to making a difference at the national stage, and I've done it. I helped stop the Republicans on Social Security. I helped register 1.4 million voters in the 2004 election, and helped spark the first increase in the youth vote since 1992. I am passionate about issues in District Five. I want to help build stronger neighborhoods in District Five. I want to stay have the ability to walk into our town centers to get, to do our shopping, to do our leisure, to dine, to hang out with our friends, to have easy access to mass transit to get to work, to have safe streets where our kids have places to be after school, where they're not confronted with the choices of, of being in gangs or getting into trouble. I believe that the county has to do a much better job making services more accessible to people. I don't see why we don't have a, something like an 800 number, where you call in and get connected to everything you need. When you go on the county's website and you search neighborhoods, the last time I did it, it came up with something about the Small Business Program. There are a lot of things that we can do to make neighborhood-level services more accessible to people, and I will focus on those issues. My service to the county has been since day one. Involvement with Long Branch now is my major priority. Bringing a citizen voice into the process of improving and investing in the Long Branch community is one of my involvements, and I believe it will bear us well for my service on the council. My service in national politics with influencing the legislative process, formulating public policy. I, I hope that you can see that I am hitting the ground running, and I will be running full speed when I am inaugurated on the council seat.
Thank you. We, do you have the microphone? Okay, so if you, I guess, come on forward, so we can see you. I, I think I'll go to one-minute responses, so we get as many questions in as possible. But if you could identify yourself, and please be polite, and please be concise. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Wafford. My husband, Dan Seligman, I live on Carroll Avenue, and prior to that, we lived in Silver Spring off Flower. And I'm impressed with both of your backgrounds. I've, I've known of both of your backgrounds for a while. My question, ooh, it's getting louder. My question is specifically, how do you assess how business actually gets done? How would you accomplish things in county council? What do you think are the deadlines? What do you think are the benchmarks? Who do you think are the players? And how do you make that assessment about how to be effective in council? And I say that as a former SAU person who used to, used to parachute into a state and win legislation. So you have to figure that stuff out fast, and I know you both have those skills. Just wanted to hear your assessment.
Okay, Ms. Irvin?
I, again, I said I'd hit the ground running. I have relationships with every single member of the county council. I've worked very closely with all of them on the legislative process, my own council members' bills, but also working with them in committee on Health and Human Services, on the budget, on the Fed Committee, which is the committee that talks about development. And I know how the system works. So council members have personal staff, and the council itself has its own staff of analysts, who I know all very well. And so to hit the ground running, you have to know who to go to, where the bodies are, who are the people who actually make the work happen, and who the council members are that actually are the leaders on the county council. And there are leaders, I believe. And I think council members, Tom Perez was a leader. I think George Leventhal, who's the president of the council this year, is a leader, and so I, I know how to do that.
Mr. Reamer?
Well, the first thing that I will do on the council is prioritize my goals, which are the Purple Line, after-school programming, and improving our neighborhood town centers, and improving the public's access to county services. I will work on those issues day in and day out, and I'll identify the other council members that have an interest in those issues to build a coalition. Of course, we won't know exactly who will be on the council after, until after this election. However, there will be many who will seek to lead and partner on all of those fronts, and I will be working with them day in and day out, with my own staff, and with the staff of other council members as well. The legislative process is something I'm certainly familiar with, having lobbied Congress for years, having testified to Congress for years, having written my own policy reports and evaluations, and having expertise in the ability of engaging the public in the process, which is the crucial element, of course, and educating about real solutions and, and driving forward to make change.
Thank you. And Mr. Reamer, you'll be the first to answer this next gentleman.
Hi, my name is John Conger. I live up here on Maple Avenue. My question is parochial. In Tacoma Park, we pay two sets of property taxes. We pay the Tacoma Park property tax and the county property tax. Now, in theory, the county's supposed to pay back the city for the services it doesn't have to provide anymore, because Tacoma Park provides them. There was a, a city committee put together called the Tax and Services Duplication Issues Committee. And I was on that committee, and we came up with a report at the end that said that the county is short, shorting the city by one to four million dollars. Will each of you commit to trying to increase the rebate that the county gives the city as our representative on the county council, so that we can pay lower property taxes?
I will commit to reviewing the relationship between all the municipalities in the county, including Tacoma Park, to identify whether the taxes that you pay are being, funding services that are amenable, and whether the county is giving you your fair share of the rebate. I absolutely will commit to that. I think it's only fair, and I, I think that, you know, there may be ways in which county services here could be provided more suitably, coordinated better with local services to help save you money and provide better services as well.
Thank you.
My first question would be, why, I mean, I haven't heard this yet, but I know that the city council members here, there's one sitting right there, and Mayor Kathy Porter, who spends, you know, she comes to the council quite a bit to talk about what the, what the needs of her municipality are. I absolutely would pledge to work with the city of Tacoma Park, its mayor, and its city council on this very issue, because it's not, you're actually not the only municipality having issues around this taxation, double taxation. So absolutely, I would be someone who would be very open and willing to sit down and have that, have that discussion with the citizens and the elected leaders of Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, I'm Alex Zee. I live on Garland Avenue. I guess I kind of have two questions. One is, do you guys favor instant runoff voting, which, as you know, was just passing to Tacoma Park in the last election? And the second question is, you're both running in the Democratic primaries, is that right? Now, I'm an independent. There's Republicans. Basically, there's all these people who will basically have no say in who represents them. And I'm personally concerned with that, and I'm just wondering, is there some way we can maybe change this primary system when there is no opposition in the formal election, so that everyone actually has a say in who represents them? And what would be your thoughts on a change like that?
Okay, now, so the first question is about instant runoff voting.
Right, do they favor instant runoff voting?
And then the second question is, in an election in which all candidates are from one party, is there, would you favor opening it up?
Further democratizing, basically, to let everyone vote in that primary?
To all voters. Okay.
Yeah, yes, on the first one. I'm, I'm in favor of instant runoff voting. And on the second one, very interesting, because I've been toying back and forth for a while about becoming an independent. And the only thing that's prevented me from doing that because of sometimes my anger with the Democratic Party, is that I want to vote in the primary. And that's what keeps a lot of people in the party. So I absolutely would like to see some changes in our primary process, because I think it keeps a lot of people out of the process.
Okay. Mr. Reamer?
I do favor instant runoff voting. I'm delighted to see that it's here in Tacoma Park, and I'd certainly be willing to explore having it in Montgomery County. As a person who has spent years of my life fighting for voting rights at Rock the Vote, I think there are many other areas that we need to look at to expand the franchise. I'd like to see the county doing a much better job, actually taking responsibility for registering people to vote. You know, that certainly is a passion of mine. Many people don't realize that last Monday was the deadline to change your party identification for the primary. If you're an independent and you wanted to register to vote in this primary, you had to change it last Monday. I don't think anybody knew that. There's a lot of serious problems like that. Yes, I favor opening up the primary process. I, I don't think it's, particularly in a community where everyone is a Democrat, and we only get 25% of Democrats turning up for the primary or something like that. We're having a much restricted body of people who are choosing our leadership, and I don't think that's right.
All right, thank you.
I'm Howard Bernstein. I see the biggest thing that makes our country special, and really the hope of humanity, is our basic creed that, you know, we're established with certain inalienable rights, life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness by our Creator. And the single biggest thing that I think, you know, really, it makes you question whether we really are living that up to that right now, is, is the policy of legalized abortion at any time up through nine months, pretty much for any reason. And I'm wondering where, what you all think about that, and if there's, you know, if you agree we should try to limit it, and if so, what you, if anything, you can do on the county council.
Okay, so just to follow the question, this is the role of the county in?
Potentially, you can pass ordinances, you have control of budgets of hospitals, you can, you can, you know, control your mandate, what sort of procedures they can do and not do. I mean, how about taking any of those?
Okay, Mr. Reamer?
My wife is on the board of NARAL Pro-Choice America, and you can bet I will not do anything that restricts a woman's right to choose in Montgomery County.
There is nothing at all that I would do to prevent a woman from choosing what she does with her own body.
Hi, my name is Josh Bach. I live down the street on Lee Avenue. I'm very encouraged about the procurement policies regarding green energy. It's just very exciting. I have another procurement question for both of you. As you may know, the Humane Society of United States is the largest animal protection organization in the entire country, and is based right in Montgomery County. In fact, roughly fifteen percent of Montgomery County residents are Humane Society of United States members. With that in mind, there's a growing concern for humane-minded consumers that many eggs in this country come from hens in factory farms confined in barren cages too small for them even to spread their wings. And because of that abuse, a lot of grocery stores, food source providers, and schools, many in this area, have now enacted cage-free egg policies. I was wondering whether you two would support procurement, that when Montgomery County would purchase eggs, those eggs would only come from hens who are cage-free?
Actually, I, I'd like to answer that question. I spent a lot of years organizing poultry workers, and I also know a lot about the people that go in and grab those hens out of those cages to get those eggs. And it's very inhumane on, for humans, and it's inhumane for the animals. And I would be very much in favor of having, working on a resolution or something of that kind to support, to support those efforts.
Thank you. Mr. Reamer?
Yes, I also would support any effort that we can do to incorporate cage-free hens and humane practices for all animals. I eat cage-free eggs. I buy free-range chicken and free-range beef. I like to go to Chipotle, where they have free-range pork for their burritos. I also know that it's a bit of a luxury, shopping at Whole Foods is not something that everyone in Montgomery County can afford to do. So we have to make sure that it's cost affordable. But I can assure you, anything that we can do to encourage and require the county to have more humane practices in its food, I would certainly pursue vigorously.
And it sounds, sounds like you were specifically looking at where the county purchases eggs, for example, school programs and things like that. Is that correct?
That is correct, procurement. So when the county purchases eggs specifically, you know, there would be an ordinance that would mandate those eggs come from cage-free hens, yes.
Okay.
That would probably be a school board item, that's something the school board would take up, because the county purchases food for school lunches, and I know they purchase eggs. And I'm sure that the prison system purchases food through procurement. And so absolutely, I mean, there's lots of ways to take on this issue, but I think you first start with raising the consciousness around it by passing a resolution, and then following it up with maybe some sort of a, some sort of a bill that would ensure that that happens.
Thank you. Mr. Reamer, would you like to follow up?
No, I mean, the bottom line is, yes, I support procurement reform in the area of promoting more humanity with eggs as a starting point. I'd like to see that if it's, there is an issue of costs, and so I'm not going to blithely say we can afford to do that. There has to, that has to be something that the county, that the public agrees to do, of course, so we have to go through a process. But, once you get through eggs, I'd like to see it go on to chicken and beef and pork and all the animals that we eat.
Thank you, both of you, for being so humane-minded. We appreciate that here in Tacoma Park and throughout Montgomery County. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Rooker from 804 Larch Avenue in Tacoma Park. As a proud member of the Green Party, I'm deeply disturbed by the stranglehold that corporate interests have on our political system at really most all levels of government. So I was distressed by both of your answers about corporate money. Several candidates have pledged to take no developer money. Diane Nixon's sitting right here, running for the House of Delegates. Mark Elrich, of course, county council. Jamie Raskin, running for state senate. The Green Party's very own Kevin Zeiss, running for US senate, and Ed Boyd, pardon? Phil Andrews, of course, yes. And Kevin Zeiss, running for US senate. The Green Party in Humboldt County, California, recently spearheaded an effort to successfully pass a ballot initiative repealing the legal status of corporations as persons, limiting corporate influence in politics. This was just earlier this month. And I realize you don't know anything about it, or probably don't, but it's to restore the original purpose of the Fourteenth Amendment of the US Constitution, which was to ensure equal protection under the law to human beings, not to corporations, which are artificial legal creations. And I'm wondering how you feel about doing something similar here at the county level to restore government to the people and not the corporate interests?
Well, I believe in government for the people, but the question was not corporations, the question was developers and how you describe a check from a person as a developer or not a developer. That's what I was trying to address. But let me say, I really believe that we should do all that we can to take corporations out of the political process and corporate dollars out of the political process. I know that there have been many tries, well, not maybe so many, at the, at the state level to pass legislation. I went, Tom Hucker's gone, but I went up this, this past session to testify with the Black Caucus on, on campaign finance reform. So I think we need to really be clear when we talk about corporate entities and individuals because there are a lot of individuals with LLCs, but then there are just individuals who live in our neighborhood who, for whatever, that's part of the work they do, and if they write you a check for $50, you give it back. And so that's what I was trying to determine in the question earlier.
Thanks. Mr. Reamer?
Well, I agree that corporations are a product of our granting them the right to exist. I don't support repealing that. I don't know if that's what you were asking. You know, I, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if I totally understand the question.
Is the question, is the heart of the question really about your position on corporate contributions to your campaign? Is that about right?
Sure. Well, I believe that what we need are people running for office and holding office who have integrity. And if you have integrity, then taking money from a corporation does not diminish your integrity, it does not affect your integrity. And if you don't have integrity, it doesn't matter where your money comes from, you're going to make the bad decisions for the wrong reasons. So that's about where I stand on that.
Okay. Any follow-ups? Okay.
Hi, I'm Karen Roper, and I live in East Silver Spring. My question is more parochial, as well. The debt loss of small business in downtown Silver Spring is now continuing into Fenton Street Village, south of Wayne. There is, the current county council put an overlay zone on the western side of Fenton Street. There is now a developer poised to wipe out the last small businesses down Fair to Georgia Avenue from Fenton down Silver Spring Avenue and replace them with 90-foot buildings. If you are elected, would you support removing this overlay zone and returning Fenton Street Village to its original zoning that was fought very hard to keep that a village of small businesses?
Thank you.
I would not support eliminating the current zoning in downtown Silver Spring. I do believe that we need mixed-use retail in downtown Silver Spring, we need more housing, and we need to support small businesses to ensure that they thrive there. There are many proposals in downtown Silver Spring that I oppose, that taking the First Baptist Church to 90 feet, I thought that was a bad idea. I do not, I do not like the condo building that has just gone in at the corner of Bonafant and Fenton. It has no sidewalk presence. It basically creates a dead canyon for the one block that it is sitting on Fenton Street. That said, I think we have, there is a very bright future for downtown Silver Spring extending beyond Ellsworth and the big chains that we put in there, as well as some of the small businesses from the community that also located in that space. So, no, I don't support eliminating the current zoning in downtown Silver Spring.
Thank you. Ms. Irvin?
I would be very amenable to listening to how we get that done. I am really concerned about zoning, the zoning laws and the zoning ordinances because I've seen over the last three and a half years how they've been misused. And so how a developer can come to the county council and put in a zoning text amendment for a certain section of a block, that is not what these zoning ordinances were put in place for. They need to be revamped because they're being abused. And so I would be very amenable to taking a look at that. I don't know very much about it, but I do know that as they're phasing in the development of Silver Spring, we got to be really on top of this because the whole concept of wedges and corridors, again, has to do with infill development as well. And if we're not staying true to the overall master plan of development in our county, then we as citizens have to, have to do something about that. And so I'm very aware of the zoning, the zoning ordinance, and I would be very amenable to listening more.
Hi there, my name is Allison Powers, and my question has to do with the support that the county council would offer to the animal shelter. As you know, countless animals are euthanized in animal shelters across the country. So my question is, would you support things like spay and neuter programs, you know, programs that would encourage citizens adopting animals from the animal shelter rather than buying pets at a pet store, that type of thing?
Yes, yes, and yes, and yes. I will support all of that. I know we have a good program here in the county, which we could easily expand if there were, if there were enough political will on the county council to take on this issue as an important issue for our community. So, yes, I will support that.
Thank you. Mr. Reamer?
Yes, I would, I would also support that. I think that people don't realize that if you, that adopting a pet that is not a puppy or a kitten can actually be much better for everybody, and trying to educate the public about that would be quite useful, so.
Thank you very much.
Now, let me just say that at 9:30, we're going to go to closing statements, and maybe we'll get through the last four of you and maybe not, and we'll, we'll see. And if, maybe we'll get to the closing statements before 9:30. So, I know we're all a little bit tired at this point. Let's see, I think it's... Yes, sir?
Gary Stevenson, I work for the American Federation of Teachers in Washington DC here. I want to raise an issue here for a couple of, for both candidates, and that is, there's been some discussion about cracking down on street gangs. And, you know, I think that presents, that's an issue. Maybe there's a certain amount of comfort that people will get when politicians, you know, when you make that type of statement. But I would like to hear something more positive about what's happening, going to happen to these kids that are falling through the cracks every day, that are filling up the penitentiaries, that are facing a barrel every day of nowhere, of minimum wage jobs, three, four jobs a day. If they're not killing themselves at work, they're ending up in the streets of Baghdad. What I'm suggesting is, how are we going to inspire kids in high school who are just falling through the sidewalk cracks here? To be part of the political system, to become citizens?
And I'm only cutting you out, cutting you off because of time. So the question is essentially, what are we doing for kids who are falling through the cracks? Is that right? Okay.
Yeah, I think the, the positive vision on the gang issue and the number one priority of the police department is after-school programming. That's how we crack down on gangs, is to create opportunities, positive opportunities for kids after school. There are enforcement issues, there are suppression issues that we have to handle. We need more cops to handle the hotspots, to track the crime, and roving units, et cetera. But the big policy change that we need on gangs is after-school programming so that every kid has a positive opportunity after school. That will make the biggest difference in gang issues that I can think of.
Ms. Irvin?
Yes, an issue very near and dear to my heart. The numbers of African-American and Latino kids who are suspended from our school system and who don't have a 2.0 average so they can't participate in after-school or any kind of activities at school worries me because we have to get to the root of the problem. And the root of the problem is how we educate kids. It's like, you can sort of vertically see from the time that the kids enter at five years old, who's dropping out in 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, and then who ends up in incarceration. The same kids. And so this is not accidental. This is a long, sort of protracted, spiraling-down effect in this country, not just here in Montgomery County. But if you look at the disproportionality in Montgomery County, go to the prison, go to the jail in Clarksville, you will see 90% of the prisoners are African-American males. And it's connected.
Hi, I'm Terry Siemens. I'm the chair of the Montgomery County Community Action Board. Every day, the lowest-income residents of the county face greater, great hardship economically. One of their most serious problems is finding quality, affordable housing. And I wonder, when you're elected to the council, what steps you'll take to greatly increase the stock of quality, affordable housing for those who have no income, no jobs, or who serve in the lowest-paying jobs in the county? Thank you.
Ms. Irvin?
There is a direct correlation between the numbers of jobs available, the number of good-paying jobs available in Montgomery County, and the numbers of people who have, who are at risk of either losing their homes or who have problems paying the rent or buying a home. And so I think, again, just like the school problem, you always have to look to the root of the problem. And as our county has grown and developed, we have not paid enough attention to the kind of jobs and the level of job, the amount of money that we pay workers in Montgomery County. And so there is a direct correlation. You can't live in a house that you can't afford, and you can't afford it if you're not working. And so I think that we have to start marrying these two concepts together because they, they don't operate in a vacuum. And so I'm very concerned, even though we have a very low unemployment rate in the county, we have underemployment, and we have too many people working too many jobs making minimum wage.
Thank you. Mr. Reamer?
I think that one of the big crises with, crises with the housing situation in Montgomery County is that there's much more demand than there is supply, and that is increasing the price of housing, and that is causing all kinds of negative consequences, one of them being increasing pressure to convert condos. I think the way to solve the market problem is to build more housing, and we have to keep pace with our annual goal for the creation of new affordable housing, which is several thousand units a year. And we're not coming anywhere near that. So building more housing is important. Significantly expanding the housing opportunities fund, I think would make a big difference. Now, it's expensive. Because of the high price of housing, the money doesn't go as far, but the county can come in and buy buildings that are on the market and then keep them in the affordable range rather than having them, having the price significantly increase. Anything we can do to help tenants buy their own buildings or their own units, I think would make a big difference. We have very low homeownership in some parts of this county, that could be changed. And again, slowing condo conversions would help.
Thank you.
My question, Colleen Cordis of Tacoma Park, and my question also relates to housing, which is that, I guess my concern has been that local governments have an incentive to kind of applaud rising housing prices because tax revenues go up. And how would each of you feel about taking the initiative on some kind of action where you would connect rising revenues from property tax values going up to then taking that money and turning it into housing relief for low and moderate-income families?
Okay. Did, Mr. Reamer?
So you're saying sort of dedicate a portion of property tax, increase value to housing opportunity for low-income families?
Yeah, I mean, it's obvious that a lot of the increasing value right now is really driving up tax revenue, and that sometimes there's minor tax relief, but it doesn't make up for the fact that there's this, you know, incredible speculation included, the rising property values. And why not, since that's making housing so unaffordable, why, why couldn't local governments, including Montgomery County, turn that around, turn it back into housing relief?
Well, I support more funding, more funding for affordable housing regardless of where the money comes from. I mean, a lot of it does come from the property tax. I don't know particularly the result of linking the two, whether that be good or bad, I don't, I'm not sure. But I know what would be good would be increasing the amount of money available for the county to buy buildings and, and keep them in the low-income, affordable housing market, and I strongly favor that.
Ms. Irvin?
We do have something in the county called the Housing Initiative Fund, HIF, and it's funded every year by dollars from some tax revenues. But I also would like to see a corporate fair share program put in place because we're, we have a county of a lot of corporate interests who we give tax breaks to and tax cuts. And so there may be a way to marry what the county's already doing and adding on top of that some sort of a corporate fair share where we can tax corporations for the money to put into a housing fund to build more affordable housing. So I think that we just need to be really creative and really think outside the box, I hate saying that, I don't know why I did. But anyway, to be more creative, to find more and better and newer solutions to this problem. Let me just talk about property taxes for a second. It's like, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? In Montgomery County, the reason why people want to live here is because our great school system, our great county services, and we pay for those. And so we have to sort of have that conversation about, about that, and that's what our taxes pay for.
Thank you. Would you like to follow up? Mr. Reamer?
No.
Okay. And Mr. Burner, if you can get this out in 15 seconds, you'll be our last question.
Well, actually, according to my watch, I have five full minutes to talk. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. I'm Keith Burner from Flower Avenue. And my question is that both of you have taken upon yourselves the mantle of being progressive. This is a year when some of us are seeing a wave of change, political change, in locally, in the county, and in the state. And my question for both of you is, what are you doing to help elect other progressives to office this year? And I want you to be specific.
Okay, Ms. Irvin?
That's a great question. Two and a half years ago, a group of people that I know very well met in my living room to discuss a way to open up the pipeline for progressives and for people who look like me, who are not part of the process. And we knew we had an uphill battle, and we decided that I would run for the school board. And a really great woman, her name is Roz Pelles, was my campaign manager, who is the, she works at the AFL-CIO as the head of their civil rights department. She, her son now, Hugh Bailey, is running for county council at large. We have worked tirelessly to try to open up opportunities in the political system to run candidates for public office in Montgomery County. I'm really proud of being part of that effort. I think we're just beginning, we're just on the verge, we're on the edge of what this new county is going to look like and who will, who will serve the people of the county. And I'm really proud to be a part of that effort.
Thank you. Mr. Reamer?
Well, as a board member of an organization called 21st Century Democrats, which funds candidates at the, they call it, at the grassroots level, at the bench of the party, I played a role in providing support to Tom Perez. 21st Century Democrats endorsed Tom Perez, also endorsed myself, and also endorsed Jamie Raskin. There is a lot more that can be done. I will eventually decide exactly which candidate's running in the council that I intend to support and how I can do that. But electing new faces and bringing new people into the elective process is certainly something that I've been involved in for years, trying to... that I've been involved in for years, trying to build the democratic, progressive wing of the party.
Thank you. Ms. Irvin, Mr. Reamer, you have spent two hours responding to questions from the community. You both must be exhausted. I haven't been answering and I'm exhausted. Earlier in the evening, we started with opening statements, and Ms. Irvin, you led off. I asked Mr. Reamer what his preference was, and he said that he preferred to give his closing statements second. And so, once again, with closing statements...
Oh, I didn't get a choice?
No, because I gave, because I gave you first, I gave him the, I gave him the choice.
As we come to the close of tonight's debate, I want to thank my opponent, Hans Reamer, for running. I think this is a really good conversation for, for us to be having in District Five, and I'm glad to be a part of it. I know what it means to run an election campaign. It's difficult. It's 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And, but I'm in this to win the race, and I'm in it because I want to support and be part of the effort in District Five. We're undergoing tremendous change in our county. I think the next decade is going to be excruciatingly important for whoever sits in that chair. And there's so much, there's so much at stake. I believe that I am the most qualified of the, of the two candidates at this dais today to represent District Five, to hit the ground running with the support of so many people around the county. I got the teachers, Montgomery County Education Association's endorsement. I have been endorsed by most of the unions in the county that I have had close working relationships with, and many, many elected officials and leaders of civic leaders and community leaders. I am so proud and so humbled to have had this support come my way, and I think I worked for it, and hopefully I deserve it. I've come from very humble beginnings, and I know what it is to struggle to make a living every day. I know what it is to be a single mom raising two boys, who I'm very proud of. They both, one just graduated from college and the other one's just going in. So, I feel like I have a stake here in this community. I believe that I'm just like so many of our friends and neighbors, and I really do think that I would serve Tacoma Park, Silver Spring, Kensington and Wheaton the best. I also bring to this position of the county council a full range of experiences and knowledge of the process of the county council. I know how to get to a majority, I know how to move things through the process. I would be delighted to serve you on the county council in District Five.
Thank you. Mr. Reamer?
Thank you, Eric, for hosting, and thank you, Ms. Irvin, for your leadership in the community. It has been a pleasure to be here tonight and to take all your questions. I'd like to acknowledge my campaign treasure, Victor Salazar standing against the wall on the left, my wife Angela in the back, her sister Michelle, many of my friends here tonight. This campaign is a joy and it's a passion. I've met thousands of people in District Five. I am meeting them in the morning at the metro, I'm knocking on their door in the afternoon, I'm meeting them back again at the metro, and I'm knocking on their door again at night. And I am learning a tremendous amount about why people love this community, what they want to see protected, what they want to see improved, and what role that I can play as their council representative. I'm running for office to focus on the neighborhood-level issues that really make a profound difference in our quality of life, that make us want to live here in Montgomery County in the first place, that we can do better yet still. I strongly support the purple line, and if I'm elected to the council, I will break ground on the purple line with, of course, the support and the active leadership of the council. But we will break ground on the purple line or I will die trying. That is my pledge, I say that on every doorstep, and I really do mean it. I will focus on after-school programming. I believe that every child should have a positive opportunity after school, and I will work to make sure that that is a reality in, in Montgomery County. Land use and our whole approach to development, we have aging town centers in District Five, Long Branch, Wheaton, Hillendale, White Oak, Montgomery Hills, Silver Spring, so many corridor, important parts of our neighborhood quality of life have been neglected for 30 years, and it's time to make a change for the better so that we all have a place to go and spend our time, to spend our money, and to build a better life with our families in our own neighborhood. Lastly, I want to make county services more accessible to you. I believe that it shouldn't be, when you walk into the regional center and they give you a brochure with 50 phone numbers for who to call to get services, that is a statement of the problem. That discourages more people from accessing services than it encourages. I would like to dramatically simplify that process on the internet, on the telephone, so that when you have a problem getting your sidewalk fixed, or a bus shelter it put in place, or a street light fixed, or a tree trimmed, you know exactly where to go and you can get it done. Those are the kind of issues that I want to focus on, on the council, and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to end with one quick announcement. We still have two more forums online for July. On July 13th, we'll be meeting with representatives for, or candidates for, for county council at large, and on July 22nd, 20th, I'm sorry, Thursday, July 20th, we'll be meeting with candidates for District 20 senate in the Maryland General Assembly. So, with that, I'd like to thank both of you for coming out tonight. We do appreciate both of you for your desire to serve us in Rockville. And I want to give special thanks to the neighborhood leaders in Tacoma Park who publicized this event. Once again, thanks to Mari Robnett for her efforts, and thanks to the city staff who make this possible, particularly the dedicated staff of Tacoma Park Cable. Thank you. Thanks, that's really tough.